Good morning. I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lit.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Still here.
Member Marciano.
Here ma'am.
Tinsley.
Here.
Thank you so much. Before we begin today, I'd like to see if our Vice Mayor and Councilmember Marciano would like to say a few words, and we also have a special message to show you first.
Good morning. Sorry, I can't be with you there today. County Commission duties, you never know what's gonna come up, but I wanted to do a couple things. One, I wanted to wish Rochelle and Mark happy retirement from City Council. Can't believe how quickly six years went by. You all did amazing work, and I really do miss the family feeling that we had as a council. I wish you both much joy and happiness in whatever new adventures you go into. Just know that this is always a family. And to our incoming Bert and Dana. I've known the two of you for a long, long time. And Bert, thank you for returning. Continuity is always a good thing, and I know that your heart is in the right place for doing this. And Dana, we've wanted you on council for a very long time. I'm glad the situation and that it just presented itself that this was a great time for you to do this. I know that you will come to love everything about the Gardens that I always say is a family. So welcome to the family. And I wish you all Godspeed. Sorry, I can't be with you. Maybe next meeting I'll show up and bring you flowers. Have a great day, have a great meeting, and good luck in your next three years. Take care.
I think we should applaud that. I always call Maria our forever mayor. That was wonderful, thank you. I'd like to take a moment to ask if Vice Mayor Lit or Councilmember Marciano would like to say a few words. Vice Mayor Lit?
This is gonna be hard. So six years ago, I came from the healthcare field into city government and really didn't know much about how the businesses in our city ran or how the city government ran itself. And I just wanna say that the past six years have been the most fulfilling and meaningful growth experience of my life, and I could not have done it without all of you, without all of the staff, without Ron and Max and the support of my fellow council members. We're really a family. Maria said it. I've never felt more a cohesive part of a group working towards the same goals to make our city the best that it can be. The respect you have for each other, for us, the teamwork that this group has excels at under Ron's leadership, the forward thinking that you've shown me, it has amazing potential to create magic, and it's something that I will definitely take with me to always be thinking in the future and ways to make things better and not become stagnant and just do them the same old way because that's the way it's always been done. I will miss all of your smiling faces. Without exception, there has been the rare occurrence when there has not been a smile on every face that I see in the city. I promise not to go too far away. You will see me, you will hear from me, and I will still stay engaged as you continue to move the city forward. So thank you all from the bottom of my heart.
Well done Rochelle. Are you ready for the next phase? What are we gonna do after this? Now Rochelle said it all. I mean, this city, the beautiful thing about being a council member in a city like this is that we have a fantastic team that knows what they're doing. We take a lot of credit for what you all do, and I hope you all understand that when we say thank you to residents for keeping the city great, it's because you do what you do, and for us, it's kind of a pleasure just to say thanks. But remember, it's the people behind the scenes. And I've said it many times, Ron has created such a team. I've learned a lot from a business perspective on how to lead, just watching you all do your jobs without too much interference. You know, the cool thing about it is we've got another group of family. I've got my mastermind team here with me today. We've got our soccer team, our family, and now we have our city team. And you're part of mine and Brandy's extended family, which is kinda cool. I think the key to doing this job well, and I'm certainly never gonna come to you guys and tell you what you should or shouldn't do, but the key to doing this job well is to remember that you always have to remember what the resident wants. It's not what Mark Marciano wants, or what Ron Ferris wants, or the staff wants, it's what the residents want. Fortunately, most of the time, everything works out well, and people do agree that what this city staff has done is what the residents want. And being a part of a small business in this town gives me a little bit of that perspective. I always ask my patients when they come in, and they live in the city, I just, I don't tell them who I am. They don't know that I'm a council member, they just know that I'm their optometrist, but I ask them, what do you do, what do you think? And everybody that comes into my office, other than complaining about traffic and pickleball courts, they are thrilled with the city that they live in, and they're thrilled with where they live. And I don't even tell them who I am, so it's not like they're trying to change their comments because of who they're talking to. So that is something that I hope all of you remember and take home with you, and I know you all do the same thing, for those of you that live in the city and that don't. But my votes have always been trying to make sure that it was their voice that was heard, not mine. And fortunately, I think it's been great, and I'm proud of every vote I've taken. Sometimes I look back and say, well, probably could've thought things a little differently. I'm not perfect, but I did every vote, and I did everything because I thought it was the right thing to do for the residents. And even though I may've had some opposition with you guys, it was always because I thought that's what the residents wanted. And that's the way I hope all of you do the same. So I hope my boys are watching. And that's it.
All right, before we proceed with the oath of office for our newly elected officials, I would like to ask all of the council up here with me now to step down from the dais so we can present our departing council members with a token of our gratitude for their years of service. But before we do, we do have a few cards to thank you, so can you guys hang tight for one second? All right. So could we please call a lawn coffer to the podium?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I really just wanted to thank Rochelle and Mark for your service to not only Palm Beach Gardens, but the Northern Palm Beach County community. It was an honor to serve on the Jupiter Council as your neighboring colleague, and you guys were always willing to come up and step up and be great ambassadors for our local regional community as well. And I'm just gonna congratulate you on your six-year terms, or two, three-year terms, but six years in office. And you know, as Mark put it, I think a lot of the public doesn't always understand, and this goes for the rest of council and the newly elected members as well, how much time you put into these part-time jobs. They really are not part-time jobs, they are more like full-time jobs because you put in the time that you feel is needed for your city. And so congratulations on a wonderful six years. I know you won't be far from helping the community because I know who you both are. So thank you so much for your service. And to the newly elected members, we look forward to seeing you do an amazing job up there as well. So have a wonderful day, and to everyone, I hope you have a wonderful Passover and Easter for those who are celebrating this week.
Thank you. All right, if we could have Greg Leach come to the podium, please, if you could state your name and address, please.
Good morning. I'm Greg Leach. I actually live in Riviera Beach, but I lived in Palm Beach Gardens for 23 years until I sold my house and moved to a condo. But I am representing the PGA Corridor Association. I'm this year's chairperson, and I want to thank you on behalf of the PGA Corridor Association, all of the council members, all of the staff, for all you do, all the time, for a partnership that we have in representing some of the larger businesses here in town. And Mark and Rochelle, thank you so much for what you've done. You've done a great job. I look forward to still seeing you at every event that we're all at. And I want to welcome both Dana and Bert back, or Bert back and Dana to the council. And I just want to thank everybody, Ron, you and your team, and everybody up here for what you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have one last card. Noel Martinez, if you'd come to the podium, state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Good morning, Noel Martinez, 12877 Trevi Isle. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank you both for six amazing years. The Chamber is so proud of the partnership that we have with the city, and that has a lot to do with your leadership. We have accomplished so much together, right? Everything from moving Artigirl to Palm Beach Gardens to the Small Business Relief Fund. We are so proud of your work, and you should be proud of everything that has been accomplished over the past six years. Thank you both for your service, your partnership, and of course, your friendship. I look forward to putting you both to work at the Chamber. To our incoming council members, you know, to our incoming council members, you know, Bert Primaroso and Dana Middleton, thank you for having the courage to serve our great city. You have both been absolute amazing staples in our community, and we look forward to working for you. Our region continues, needs to have good leaders like you who want to serve their local communities. And again, I look forward to working with you both. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, so we're going to bring our current council down to give you guys a few gifts, and then we'll do the swearing in. All right. On behalf of our City Council team, all of the staff here, we want to thank you so much for your service. It is an honor and a privilege to call you an associate, a friend, and family as well. We will always have you, and you also will be a forever mayor. Thank you. It's okay. All right. And next Rochelle Lit, my Vice Mayor and dear friend. Thank you so much for all you do. You're tireless, and again, we are so honored to have served with you. Our city is lucky to have you, and you will always be a council member and forever mayor as well. Thank you so much for your service. We're glad you're in our family. This is very bittersweet, you guys, so thank you for bearing with us.
(Inaudible)
All right, it is time for the oath of office. If the city clerk would please begin administering the oath of office to our newly elected officials, we'll begin with Councilmember-elect Bert Primaroso, followed by Councilmember-elect Dana Middleton.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your full name.
I, Robert G. Primaroso.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and pretend. Sorry. I studied this, I swear. Support, protect, and defend. Who writes these things?
The Constitution and the Government of the United States.
The Constitution and the Government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Oh, here, Bert. Now Councilmember-elect Middleton, please. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your full name.
I, Dana P. Middleton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and Government of the United States.
The Constitution and Government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which now I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. One more, Dana.
Thank you all so much. It's truly an honor. We are all, in my mind, policymakers. I don't like to think of any of us as politicians up here. I think everyone who's had the honor of sitting here, or who sits here now, we're doing it because we absolutely love this city and hope that we can be a good voice for our residents, and that this is truly about love. And to be able to make policy, to affect the future, to weave ourselves a little bit into the future of our city means so much. So again, thank you all so much for your service, and thank you for your bravery, both of you. Yeah, there's a lot of, next is a reorganization of Mayor and Vice Mayor. If the clerk could read the title, or do I read it?
You'll first take the, you'll open the floor for nominations first.
Okay, lovely. All right, so I would like to open the floor for nominations for the appointment of Mayor.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to, and say a couple things. First off, I'd like to continue the guidance of you, Mayor Chelsea, and I would like to make a motion to, for you to continue to be mayor, and I'd like to throw my hat in the ring. There's nothing going on this year, there's no elections going on, and I would be in honor to be your partner if, I'd like to throw my hat in the ring for Vice Mayor. And I'd like to close nominations.
All right, so I will second that, and we'll bring it to vote. Max, we just go with both of them at the same time, then?
Yes, ma'am, it was one motion.
Okay, all right. So if I second it, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes three to two. All right, so now I would like to have the clerk read the title.
Resolution 12, 2023, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, appointing the Mayor and the Vice Mayor for the city, providing an effective date for other purposes.
All right, so may I get a motion and a second to approve Resolution 12, 2023 with the names of Chelsea Reed as Mayor and Carl Woods as Vice Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes three to two. All right, let's move on. Time for City Council to begin. If you all care to stay, we'd love to have you. If not, we understand if you have to get on to your day. And happy Passover, happy Easter for all who celebrate. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda today?
No, ma'am.
All right, so next is announcements and presentations. Do we have any on the agenda? We don't. So we're gonna move right on to comments for the public. As far as comment cards that are not on the agenda, we have none. So we're going to move on to the City Manager Report. Ron, do you have, nope, we have no report today. This is moving right along. Next, on to the consent agenda. Do we have anyone pulling anything from the consent? Nothing? All right, so since nothing is to be read, we will move on, and could I get a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero. We do not have any quasi-judicial hearings today, so we're gonna move right on to Ordinance 2, 2023. If the clerk, sorry, if the clerk could please read the title.
Ordinance 2, 2023, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of Ordinances at Article 3, Boards and Committees, by amending Division 4 Budget Oversight Review Board to revise the title, powers, and duties of the Board to stagger member terms and to exempt the Board from the requirements of subsection 2-90(c), providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 2 Administration shall remain the same as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. Has anything changed since first reading? Do we need a presentation at all?
Nothing has changed since first reading.
Nothing has changed? All right, thank you so much. We don't have anyone wishing to speak on this item with any comment cards. Do we have any comments from council? Any? No? All right, so I'm going to, I didn't, I did not open the hearing, I'm sorry, guys. I'm gonna open the hearing. Nothing has changed. Apologize, bit of a busy morning. We don't have a presentation, and I'm going to, since we have nothing else, close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thanks, Marcy. Thank you, Dana. All right, do we have any further discussion from council regarding this on second reading? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. Ordinance 3. If the clerk could please read the title.
Ordinance 3, 2023, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a city-initiated text amendment to the future land use element of the city's comprehensive land use plan to modify a policy related to building height within the Transit Oriented Development, TOD, district, to incorporate a new policy related to design guidelines in the TOD district, and to incorporate a new objective and associated policies for a Marina district, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, and other reviewing agencies, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-in sheet at the front desk for anyone wishing to receive additional information from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you so much, Patty. So now I am gonna open the hearing, and I see Samantha Marone. Is that our podium? If you could give us a presentation, tell us what we have ahead.
Yes, hi. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Welcome to the new council members. This is a comprehensive plan text amendment, a city-initiated text amendment. There are two separate components to this amendment that I will go into detail separately. The first is a modification to an existing policy relating to building height in the Transit Oriented Development District. The second is an incorporation of a new policy related to design guidelines in the TOD district, and the incorporation of a new objective and policies for a Marina district. So looking back at the history in the city, all the way back to 2006, the city held a building height charrette and community planning sessions to provide workshops to residents and city stakeholders related to building height in the city. So since then, steps have been made through the Transit Oriented Development District Master Plan and developments that have occurred since then to provide building height within the city in certain areas. So looking at the modification to policy 1.3.9.9, currently, the Transit Oriented Development District maximum height is nine stories or 135 feet. The modification to that is to remove the reference to nine stories. We are also proposing an amendment to that policy to add a potential increase of a maximum of 180 feet for building height within the TOD with the provision of 15% additional open space. With the increased building height, additional density within the TOD district would be possible, and with that, more open space to provide additional amenities, site circulation, and landscaping would be possible. A new policy, 1.3.9.17, encourages design guidelines to be used for projects within the TOD district area. This would be specific to projects that are are residential only or non-residential only because we already have a policy to allow design guidelines to be used for mixed-use projects. Um, and design guidelines are specific on a site-by-site basis for any particular development proposing design guidelines that would come through City Council for specific approval on that site. So looking at a couple of existing buildings in the city, most of which are within the TOD District, highlighted, um, by the colors in this map, some of the existing buildings that we have, uh, that already exceed the maximum building height are the Landmark Building at 192 feet, the Marriott Hotel off of RCA at 169 feet, and the Devastated Towers at 197 feet to the top of the pyramids, just for reference. Moving on to a separate part of the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, this is, um, completely separate from the TOD District modifications. This is a proposed Marina District centered around PGA Boulevard and the Intercoastal Waterway. The projects that are highlighted on the map are proposed to be included with this overlay. The objective that is proposed for the Marina District is to establish the overlay, to encourage and emphasize the use of the intercoastal. Policies that we are including, number one, is to incorporate land development regulations specific to the Marina District at a later date to allow for specific permitted uses and tiering standards for, um, any future development within the Marina District. Other policies that we are including encourage the mix of uses to support the enjoyment of the intercoastal and the encouragement of public open space and parks, again, to, um, provide an amenity of the intercoastal. We are also proposing a maximum building height of 90 feet, which is consistent with a recently approved project, um, at the PGA Waterfront Site, which was approved at 87 feet. Um, and the Marina District will also, uh, provide policies to ensure consistency with the coastal management element of our comprehensive plan and protect water quality and marine habitats. Again, as referenced, this is an approved project that would be part of the Marina District. The height was approved at 87 feet, but any particular project moving forward for development or redevelopment would come through, um, for City Council approval and consistency with this district. Public notice was provided prior to the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board meeting, which occurred on March 14th, 2023. Since then, we have received letters of support from the PGA Corridor Association and the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce for this amendment. And public notice has also been provided prior to this City Council meeting through newspaper publishing and mailing to all affected property owners. Staff recommends approval of ordinance three, 2023, on first reading. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Samantha. We do have one comment card. So if I could call Noel Martinez to the podium again, please. Again, you will need to state your name and address again. Thanks.
Good morning again. Um, you know, the Chamber of Commerce fully supports the staff-initiated Marine District overlay and feel that it is important, it is an important addition to the overall fiscal health and vision of our city. We strongly urge you, or encourage you, to, uh, follow the planning board's unanimous recommendation of approval and support staff in this matter. Thank you so much.
All right. Just to confirm, do we have any other cards, any other comment cards? Greg, okay, I apologize, Greg. We misunderstood. Come on up. Thank you so much. If you could come to the podium and, uh, state your name and address. Thanks for coming up twice, too.
Thank you. You took me by surprise on the first one, so this one I was ready.
You know, you did great. You did great. And I knew you had something to say, so we wanted to make sure your voice was heard.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on behalf of the PGA Corridor Association, again, I'm Greg Leach, 2640 Lakeshore Drive. Um, I, uh, just like Noel, I think PGA Corridor supports the city's initiative to, um, change the TOD and, um, create the Marina District. We do think it's, it's very viable for our area and it would really enhance our, our city. So we encourage you to take a hard look at that and take staff recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you again. We really appreciate it. All right. So, uh, we don't have anyone else wishing to speak on this, so I'm going to close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve? And we'll bring it back to discussion after that. May I get a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion, ordinance three, 2023, to approve on first reading.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
All right. So let's, uh, let's discuss that. Do we have anything we want to talk about on this one? Any comments? I'll just go on down the line. I'll start over here with Marcy.
I think it was greatly written very well, and it's a, a perfect, uh, thing to do for our growing city. And I am 100% in support.
Okay, thank you. Moving down the line, Bert.
Yeah, I, I concur with Marcy's comments and staff's done a nice job. This has been going on for a long time, even before I was on the council originally. So it's an important area for the city. Um, restricting it to 90 feet, which is what the Catifumo property is, seems to be the right height for that corner area. So I'm all in support. So continue. Good luck. And, uh, we'll see what comes about for us to approve down the road.
Excellent. All right. Councilmember Milton.
Yeah, I, I concur with, um, what Marcy and what Bert said, and the staff did a great job. Um, always loved the presentations and, and I recommend approval.
So much, Carl.
I'm gonna second Noel and Greg. And we gotta keep the city moving forward. It's gonna be interesting to see what comes up under this and, you know, how the city grows. So, um, we need to do it. You know, we're Palm Beach Gardens, so we're gonna do it. And thank you for putting it together. It was perfect for me. Thanks.
Okay, excellent. And I, I'd have to just, uh, again, commend our staff for pursuing overlays like this, whether it's the TOD overlay, this Marina District overlay, allowing our residents to live, work, and play within our city in a way that can get them around safely and happily is one more testament that it's just gonna get even better here. So, uh, thank you so much. Hearing no further discussion, I'll go for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Thank you so much. Moving right along to ordinance number six. If the clerk could please read the title.
Ordinance six, 2023. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, inclusive, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Hello, Arian.
Good morning.
Good morning. So let's go ahead and we'll have our presentation. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Uh, for the record, my name's Arian Panzak. I am the finance administrator. So today, ordinance six is just a bit of housekeeping, so that way we can amend the budget to record the proceeds for the Series 2023 Public Improvement Bond that was approved last month at par for $20,100,000, along with the cost of issuance expense of $64,750. Ordinance six will also establish the capital budget for the infrastructure projects, so project managers can begin planning and constructing, construction with a clear understanding of the available resources and funding for those projects. This slide provides a breakdown of how those projects will be funded. Nine million will be allocated to the priority infrastructure road projects, one million to the Oaks Park pickleball courts, and 10 million to the Burns Road Community Center project. We had a cost of issuance of $64,750, leaving us with $35,250 for contingency, should any of these projects need it. Staff recommends approval of ordinance six, 2023, as presented on the first reading.
Thank you so much, Arian. And we do not have anyone wishing to speak on this item. And we don't have any comment cards. So I am going to close the hearing. And could I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
Make a motion to move ordinance six, 2023, on first reading.
I'll second. Excellent. Let's bring it back for discussion. Uh, let's start over with Carl.
Um, no discussion, but there was a, um, I'm sorry, I do have a question. There was a, um, a comment that was brought up that if, if there was gonna be any shortcoming, it would be on the pickleball court at the park. Um, I kinda wondered why, after all the money we're spending, after all the growth we're doing, why would we cut two pickleball courts? Is this money in there to make sure it's all, it's 10 courts, right?
I believe we were planning up to 12 courts. And as we're starting our planning and construction process and, and receiving those quotes back from, from the contractors, we'll determine how much we have available within that million-dollar allocation, um, to, to see how many pro- uh, of those courts we can actually construct.
That's an update from the operations side. Uh, the funding is adequate. 12 courts will be built.
That, that, okay, that, then thank you. That was what I was looking for. Appreciate that.
All right, Dana.
No, I don't think I have any comments. Um, you always do a great job with putting everything together, and it seems like everything's moving along nicely. So thank you.
Okay, excellent. Bert?
Yeah, the only comments I had yesterday during our meeting was the infrastructure on the bridge, but that $9 million seems adequate to do that project. Um, so I'm good with the rest.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, Marcy.
No comments, except that I'm looking forward to getting these projects started. Thank you for doing a great job.
Okay. So I'll just chime in really briefly again with our AAA bond rating. This makes it wonderful to do without affecting our taxpayers' pockets at all, which is extraordinary. And we don't have, um, other ways of making sure that roadways like that bridge that Bert was mentioning, or, uh, our TOD District has the funding it needs. And so we'll do it ourselves without any, without any dent to our residents, except for to help them. So I'm really thrilled. And maybe we'll get less emails about pickleball, is my other hope. All right. So thank you so much. Uh, let's bring it back to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes five, zero. Thank you so much, Arian. Great job. All right. We're moving on to Resolution 15, 2023. These are the appointments to the Budget Review Board. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 15, 2023. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the appointment and/or reappointment of the five regular members to the Budget Review Board, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Come on back up.
Good morning again.
Yes, we don't have any comment cards.
So Resolution 15 will appoint five members to the revised Budget Review Board. Our current appointments expire at the end of May, and the city clerk has spoke with all five members who, um, mentioned that they are interested in reappointment. All said they would like to serve again, except for David Middleton, who resigned from the board, which leaves us with one vacancy. Mark Feldmesser also mentioned that he will be unavailable to attend two of the four meetings scheduled in July and September due to travel plans. These meetings will include the budget, budget presentation and the final report that is provided to council. Due to the minimal number of meetings, this would be 50% of the scheduled meetings. In accordance with our City Code of Ordinances, Section two dash nine six, any member of any board who is absent for more than 25% of any scheduled meetings within a fiscal year will automatically be removed. So I would submit that we reappoint the three current board members, Andrew Cometer, Dennis Baring, and Mark Schulte, who are all able to attend the meetings, and two new members, Mark Cohen and Della Porter, to ensure that we have a full board present to assess the proposed budget and provide an independent evaluation report for council's review.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. All right. So what we'll do next is, uh, we'll try to get a motion in a second so that we can discuss this. So may I get a motion in a second to move forward with Resolution 15?
I'll make a motion, uh, to reappoint Andrew Cometer, Dennis Baring, Mark Schulte, and, um, then to appoint Mark Cohen and Della Porter.
And my second will be?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys crack me up. Let's discuss this. So, uh, I just want to note that we do have Della Porter in the audience. So thank you for attending today. We appreciate that. Um, let's see. We'll start with Marcy.
I'm, I'm good with that group, so I appreciate everyone's willing and volunteering for this position.
No, just to confirm from our meeting yesterday, so Andrew, Dennis, and Mark Schulte are the one, three, and five seats. And the two and four are Elmark Cohen and Della Porter?
Correct.
For the two and three-year terms?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I just gotta get that out. You know me, I'm just the way it is.
We love it. That's great.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. And so you were explaining during my agenda review, this also allows for staggering, so we don't have everyone coming off and on at one time?
Yes. This is a companion resolution to ordinance two. So it allows, um, that our reappointments, since they all expire at the end of May, um, ordinance two will now allow the staggered terms where three will serve for two years and two will serve for three. And then once they expire, then they'll all be on that three-year term for reappointment. And this will allow our Budget Review Board to always have, um,
Continuity.
Experience and continuity on the boards. That way we don't have a brand-new, uh, board all at once.
Okay. And I, I also had asked during my agenda review about who is the chair and the vice chair, and they choose that amongst themselves at the first meeting? Or when do they do that?
Yes. We have a meeting scheduled planned for June, which they'll have their, um, introduction to the board. And at that time, they'll also choose who their mayor, their, uh, chair and vice chair will be.
Okay. Thank you so much, Arian. Any other comments, you guys? All right. Before we can end, I want to thank David Middleton for his years of service. We sincerely appreciate it. We know that it takes time, and it's what the most important thing that happens at this city. So thank you so much. Hearing no further discussion, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes five, zero. Thank you all so much for your service. Welcome aboard, Della. All right. Next, we have items for council action and discussion or interest. We have one item on the agenda, which is the appointments to external boards and committees. Every council member has, has a giant chart here, which I believe I can't find right now, but I will get it. And that's my, that's my scratch sheet. Uh, so if we've all had an opportunity to review the chart, we'll start at the top. Here we go. This is the updated one. Thank you. Thank you, Patty, so much for updating it as well. Um, we kind of consolidated a couple of things. So if we could, I'm just gonna move down, um, and discuss it on the way, just for our new council members. And you guys can just shush me if you already know it. I don't, I don't mind at all to be interrupted. It's fine. Uh, so the first board or external committee that we are going to have an appointee for is the Palm Beach County League of Cities. Uh, previously, it was, uh, Vice Mayor Rochelle Litt. And, um, all of us, all of us are always alternates on this one. And I am about to get, uh, they're making, I mean, I get to be the vice president of the League of Cities. So I will, I will be there, but we do need an appointee. So, Carl, since you're the vice mayor and Rochelle was the previous appointee, will you be available?
Agreed.
All right. Thank you. Okay. North County Intergovernmental, uh, this meets every three months. It is usually the mayor. So since you guys were, um, really, I'm completely humbled that you let me stick around for another year. I will get to continue doing that. And, uh, Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency.
You want the vice mayor to be, um, alternate for the North County?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Sure.
North County Intergovernmental. Okay.
That's a phone call, uh, so Zoom or phone call every, or these meetings every three months. Okay. Carl, you good with that?
Unless anybody has a, an extra interest in it, I'm fine with it.
It's a, it's a really interesting meeting. It's, it's always, it's always very pertinent to what's happening in the county. Um, Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency. Please, may I have that?
Absolutely. I think you're doing an excellent job on it.
We're not taking you away from that.
No way.
I would like Marcy to stay on, though, with your planning experience.
I'll be happy to do it.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, Seacoast, that's all you, Ron. And Ron, I believe you've been appointed the chair?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations on that. Bioscience Land Protection Advisory Board. I don't know when this last met. I think it's been a little while. Uh, do I have anyone very interested in this?
I'll take over Mark's spot, and I'll call him if I need him.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Workforce Alliance Consortium.
Excuse me, mayor, is there an alternate to the?
Oh, I apologize. Looks like it's me. Would anyone else like to be the alternate? I'm, I've got plenty going around.
I'll, I'll do that.
Thank you, Bert. I appreciate it. Uh, Palm Beach Workforce Alliance Consortium for Career Source is usually the mayor. So again, humbled, honored, and I really like this board. Um, let's see. And I'll need an alternate.
I can do that.
Oh, great. Thank you, Dana. Uh, Palm Beach North Economic Development Committee. Uh, what this entails is the Economic Development Committee meets at, usually around, uh, the city or sometimes on Zoom, uh, every other month. And whoever the representative is, you just do a quick one to three minutes. Okay, Dana. Wonderful. Thank you so much. And who will be the alternate for that?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Bert. And, um, previously, we had listed the Sustainability Subcommittee, but that is a subsidiary of Palm Beach North Economic Development Committee that meets on the alternate month. And I don't believe that there's, you don't have to actually go to that if you don't want to, but if you want to, it's pretty cool. Next, we have Palm Beach North Government Affairs. Again, it meets the second Friday of the month on Zoom. Always an interesting topic. It was previously Rochelle. Do I have anyone who would like to represent the city for that?
I can do that.
Okay, great. And then we are all your alternates. Um, and then Loxahatchie River Coordinating Council. We had, uh, Carl, if I could move you up?
Yep.
And then we'll look for an alternate.
Agreed.
Who would like to be the alternate for Loxahatchie River Coordinating Council?
Go for it.
I'm gonna voluntold you. If you don't stand.
Go ahead, Dana.
Okay. Dana. It hasn't met since I've been on council that I'm aware of. You are, you are now the alternate to the Loxahatchie River Coordinating Council. Um, Treasure Coast Regional, uh, Planning Council, they actually sort- Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, they actually sort of choose and appoint those folks, and I am the appointee, and Debbie Cersey from North Palm Beach is my alternate. You guys are welcome to come with me anytime you want. Another really great meeting. And then the Multi-Jurisdictional Issues Coordination Forum is usually the mayor, and I would love to stick around, and I do need an alternate. This is a phone call, usually.
That should probably be Carl, too, as vice mayor.
All right, let's do it.
Bert?
Yeah. You're vice mayor, Bert. You take it over Rochelle's spot.
So what I would like to say is, if you have a moment where you... What I like to do, what has worked for Marcy and for me for the TPA, is that we usually connect at least a month ahead just to check in and make sure that we both know what's on the calendar. And Marcy's always marked out that time on her calendar just in case anything ever happens. So I would recommend we all do the same, continuing. Sometimes you'll forget. We'll be on the Zoom for the chamber, and all of a sudden, we'll have a text flying like, wait, which one of us is the appointee? So keep an eye on it, and I'll try to keep this close to my desk as well, so that we all know who's who. And I want to thank all of you guys for taking the extra time. As Mark mentioned, this is a part-time job, right? But we all take it as seriously as it is everything, and thank you so much for filling out that chart. All right, Patty, do we have any... Did you get all of it? You're good? Okay, I apologize. All right, moving on. We'll move on to the city attorney report. Max, do we have a report?
No report, ma'am.
Hi, before we go, I have some pictures. Can I share my pictures? Is it too late to do that? Something really special happened. And we deal with a lot of overlays and budgeting and things like that, but there are moments that I think really define what make our city special. And so I think Candace was reached out to by Gardens Court that there was a resident that was turning 105. And so she and Patty arranged for our first responders, and I got lucky enough to get invited to meet Mr. Poe, and he was turning 105.
That's amazing.
I still need a hat like that. Boy, he looks good. So here's the irony. So his birthday was March 16, and my son had just flown in from Boston to visit, so he actually kind of stood in the background. And he wound up talking to him afterwards. And he wrote me an email, and I just have two paragraphs that my son sent me. And here's what Taylor wrote. "In response to my unstated question of how he managed to stay healthy and youthful for so long, he told me to simply keep moving. No advice about diet, no warning to stay away from any particular substance, not even spiritual wisdom gleaned from many years of a happy life, simply the encouragement to always move forward, both in the sense of staying active and the idea of not letting the world leave you behind. So if the rest of the world can combine that philosophy with the same radiant kindness that this man showed to everyone around him, perhaps we can all live just as long." So it was great. I want to thank all of our first responders that came today, that day. And he did pass shortly after. And I was told that this was absolutely a highlight, that he was a glow for days and peacefully, peacefully passed. And I'm so sad, because I was really hoping we'd go back for 106, because what an extraordinary human and what an honor that we get to do in the city. And thank you, guys, for indulging me in that. And if there is no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.